Take this opportunity to call to order the December 14th, 2023 regular meeting of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. I'm going to ask if we can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask Mr. Perino if he will lead us, and I'm going to ask if you will remain standing for a few moments of silence, please.
(inaudible) Mr. Perino.
I did want to include in our moment of silence this evening Timothy Fritsch. Timothy was a graduate of 1984 from Middletown High School, a lifelong resident of Orange County. And when I went to his wake about two weeks ago, right after Thanksgiving, which was unexpected, one of his family members remembers Mr. Perino giving moments of silence to folks from the Middletown School District, and I promised that we would do that this evening at our December 14th meeting. So God bless the family and God bless Tim Fritsch. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Perino for his moments of silence.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. The first moment of silence this evening, and we have not been in session for a while, so there's a few of them this evening. For the people who are here, maybe the first time, we do this out of respect for those who have gone before us and were members of the district. The first moment of silence is for Jessica Wilks. Jessica Wilks, the sister of our Board President, Bishop John Williams. Did not know Jessica, but from what I've read and from what was said at the service, Jessica Wilks was a person, a multi-talented person. She was an executive for Bell Telephone, and then when Bell became Verizon, she worked at Verizon for many, many years. She was a well-respected vocalist. She could be heard singing in gospel groups and leading praise all over the Pittsburgh Jessica was also an accomplished author and a publisher. She published a Christian women's magazine called A More Excellent Way, and that would feature women in business and the ministry. She was also known as a very generous person who did charity work and who gave of her time very frequently and gave a lot of time to the community. So Jessica Wilks will be missed. And I must say that John and Sharonda Williams did all in their power to bring Jessica to the Middletown area so that she could be with her family in the last days, and I know it was not easy. The next moment of silence is Suzette Helena Ellerin. And Suzette Helena Ellerin worked for 37 years in the Middletown School District in the special ed department as a teaching assistant. Sue, as she was liked to be called, was a graduate of Middletown High School. She served her community as a member of Temple Sinai. She served on the Board of Directors. She was very, very devoted to reading. She worked with a number of the reading specialists at the time, including Dr. Edie Shapiro, who was known as a great, great instructor and station at the Carter School, which was a Mechanics Town. She organized a number of book fairs in the community, and she served on a number of committees in the Middletown School District connected with reading. So her daughter, as a matter of fact, Michelle Ellen graduated from Middletown and is a practicing attorney with an excellent reputation. The next moment of silence this evening is for Mr. Robert E. Walt. And I work with Bob. Bob, a mathematics teacher at Twin Towers, very into the conservation movement, and I would say Bob was ahead of his time on this. Belonged to a number of conservation organizations. He presented programs to the students in Twin Towers on conservation and the environment. He served on a number of boards connected with conservation. And he was a devoted member to that area. And also, continuing on with this, he was very interested in helping students. He would stay many hours after school to help students with mathematics if they didn't understand the concept. The final moment of silence this evening is for one of our board members, Dr. Licodlas Moro. Dr. Moro served from 2007 to 2012, and he served also a term as Board President. Nick was a professor of Biology at Middletown, I'm sorry, at Orange County Community College, Ph.D. Whether you agreed with Nick or you didn't agree with him, you always knew where Nick stood. So all these people that I've mentioned, they served their community, served in one way or the other the district, or related to people who served the district, and they most definitely will be missed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, Mr. Rett, please.
We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Monchere. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me read this. This agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting, and the final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at any time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. All right. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Monchere, please.
Mrs. Blumenau?
Here.
Mr. Estrada?
Here.
Mr. Perino?
Here.
Mr. Rett?
Here.
Ms. Romero?
Here.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Here.
Thank you. I need a motion for the approval of our agenda tonight.
I'd like to amend, make a motion to amend the agenda, Mr. President, to include 5B, a superintendent's report right after the approval of the agenda, and also the elimination of Item 10 and 11 from tonight's agenda.
Let me ask you this. If we can, if we change your motion, which you, we've moved what you've requested, we've looked at it to move it to Item 7 immediately after the approval of the minutes.
So I'm fine with that.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll take a second on that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded for the approval of the agenda as motioned the changes to the agenda. We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. I need a motion for the approval of the regular meetings minutes from November 2nd, 2023, please.
So moved.
Second on that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. I need a motion for the approval of the regular meetings minutes from November 2nd, 2023, please.
So moved.
Second on that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Approval of the special meetings minutes from November 16th, 2023. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Who moved? Moved by Mrs. Blumenau, seconded by Mr. Rett, I believe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to our superintendent's updates, turn you into the hands of our superintendent, Mrs. Amy Creedon.
Thank you. Good evening. Yesterday and today were sad days for our district and school community. What happened is not okay. It's concerning. It's upsetting. It's frustrating, and my heart is hurting. The safety, health, and well-being of our entire school community remains our top priority. Schools provide safety, structure, social connectedness, resource linking, and so much more. Our schools are safe places. However, there are a small number of our scholars who make poor choices. Yesterday, the incident at Monhagen Middle School where a student was stabbed was terrible, unimaginable. The incident began as a physical altercation between two young people, to which two additional individuals, young people, joined. It was a scholar-on-scholar incident. This altercation caused the school to enter a lockdown. One of the students involved in the altercation brought what appears to be a knife to school and used this during the altercation. According to the Town of Walkill Police Department, who will be the lead agency for this criminal investigation, a 13-year-old was stabbed. Both students received immediate medical attention on the scene by our school's incredible nursing staff and were later transported to hospitals by ambulance for care. Our staff was on the scene within 18 seconds and deserves commendation. Our security staff, educators, faculty, and administrators went into action exactly as I would have expected. I am very proud of that team. According to the Town of Walkill Police Department, the victim is listed as in stable condition. According to that agency, a subsequent investigation by the Town of Walkill, the City of Middletown Police Department, and the New York State Police resulted in a juvenile arrest. The defendant is 13 years old and was charged and is being prosecuted by the Orange County Attorney's Office. We continue to urge anyone with information to please come forward and speak to a trusted There are allegations being circulated that our team was warned about this incident by another student and their family. This simply is not true, and that specific matter is being handled by law enforcement. We are left in the aftermath of the event with a commitment to be in the service of our young people, our staff, and our community as we process this incident and begin to take the necessary steps to heal. We understand the gravity of today's events, yesterday's events, and are left with feelings of sadness and frustration. Yesterday and today were very heavy days inside the district, but our commitment includes ensuring that students and families feel safe and supported at all times as members of our school community. Today, Monhagen Middle School opened using a three-hour delay schedule. We had about 50% of our young people attend school today. It was a time to connect, support each other, share space, and begin to heal. Again, tomorrow, Friday, December 15th, we will open using the same three-hour delay schedule. Students will not be permitted to bring their district-provided devices or any backpacks or large bags with them. Our focus, like it was today, is on healing, recovery, processing the events, and our next steps forward. Backpacks, bags, and Chromebooks are not needed because we are sharing space to support and recover and get our young people and our adults access to any resources that they might need. Students will go through metal detectors upon arrival again tomorrow like they did today. Prefuel will be provided in grab-and-go style at student arrival. Counseling support and therapy dogs will be available for a second day. Once again today, we are ending the day with a strong resolve for action. Every member of this community puts their trust in us when they send their young people to school, and we recognize the heavy weight that that is. All acts of violence in our schools are unacceptable. We will not tolerate this, and we will use the fullest extent of the code of conduct, which could include resulting in superintendent's hearings and extended out-of-school time in conjunction with the law to continue to support our young people, our families, and our community. Please know what happened yesterday is not the majority of our scholars. The majority of our scholars are incredible members of this vibrant school community and are role models to their peers. Young people at Monhagen demonstrated that today over and over again. Even knowing that this isn't the majority of our young people, I am here tonight again sounding the alarm. What happened yesterday is not okay. We are not okay. Our young people are not okay. We are calling on our community to continue to lean in, support us, and support our young people who are resorting to violence to solve their struggles. We will continue to use all available resources at our disposal to provide support to our scholars and our families, but we cannot do this work in isolation. Let's continue to work together. Let's remember to be kind with one another, because I know that we have challenges in front of us, but I'm confident that together, all things are possible. I want to thank you for your continued partnership and for allowing us to open our doors to your young people. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to add to this is that all of us sitting at this table are grieving today, the events of yesterday, but I do want the public to understand that we unfortunately are bound to not be able to speak about details as we are a part of the, a part of the, what is the process? The appeals process and a part of the due diligence process. And so we're bound by law to not be able to not speak about details. That does not minimize our grief, does not minimize our frustration, it does not minimize how we feel in this situation along with the rest of this community. We're a part of this community, and we're your neighbors, and we are trying to find a way to navigate this together. Thank you. Let's move on so that we can keep moving forward. Action items. Let's get this out the way. Action items. I'd like to entertain a motion for Action Item A, Approval of Personnel Memorandum 12A, numbers 1 and 2, administrative, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to make a comment, please. Item B on that is the retirement of a longtime administrator in the district, Sue Short. Sue is a phenomenal person, an extraordinary administrator. I wish Sue the best in her retirement. It's well-deserved, but she definitely will be missed because she certainly was a leading force in this district. So I wish her good luck and sadly say, you know, the best of you and enjoy your retirement, Sue. You will be missed.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let me, let me, let me. Mr. Perino, please.
Just to point out that that's not going to take effect until the end of the school year.
Thank you. I was about to say that. Thank you.
Still feel sad about it, Joe.
Of course, we all do.
We've had discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Moving on to approval. Approval of Personnel Memorandum 12B, numbers 1 through 16, instructional. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second on that.
Moved by Mr. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Action Item C, Need a motion for the approval of Personnel Memorandum 12C, 1 through 13, non-instructional, please.
So moved.
Second.
That was moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion here? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So passes. Action Item D, Approval of Financial Memorandum 10D, numbers 1 through 11. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Blumenau, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion here?
I do.
Yes.
Yeah, just on item number six on the financial memorandum, just a word of caution, we are approving a contract that services have already been provided for, so just in the future, I know that we didn't have a board meeting in between during the break, and that was probably the reason why, but just a note of caution.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Action Item E, Approval of Special Services Memorandum 9E, numbers 1 and 2. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So passes. Action Item F, Approval of Change Orders, 14F, numbers 1 through 5. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Rett. Discussion here. Bill, if you don't mind, thank you.
Certainly. So our first change order tonight is to cut and remove damaged sections of existing basketball court asphalt and to apply seal coat to the remaining asphalt. The next is to provide labor and material to repair conduit and wiring damage while excavating a drainage line. Those are both at Maple Hill. The next three are at Twin Towers. The first is to provide additional concrete sidewalk at the Grand Ave student drop-off loop. Next is to provide labor and material necessary to install a new power and fiber conduits between the building and the digital street sign. The next is to provide an additional 118 feet of pipe insulation. And the final one is for the athletic field out here for the high school, and that is to provide a custom paint color for the elevators, exterior wall panels, and trim in lieu of the standard color.
Thank you. You've heard discussion. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Bill, this is part of the Buildings and Grounds and Change Order Committee, and Bill stays in close contact since I chair that committee. He stays in close contact with me during the week, and then he sends the items to members of the Buildings and Grounds and Change Order Committees. Bill, maybe one that I asked about, I asked about a number of these, but one maybe you want to just go over a little bit more is the custom paint color in the elevator and why we need that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. When these products are spec'd by the architects, they come with just a standard baseline, different colors. And they had a blue, but it came nowhere near what our typical midi-blue is, and so we've matched both the roof of the concession stand and the blue framework in the bleachers themselves so that it blends in, looks appropriate on the campus there. So that's the reason for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to comment that number two and number five are local Middletown providers, so it's nice to see Middletown folks participating in our projects.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I also have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just on item, on the first change order, it refers to the repair of the conduit and wiring damage while excavating. Were we utilizing an outside excavation company for that? And if so, are they going to be on the line for recouping any payment for that?
Mr. Bartlett?
So that was part, it was the same company that was doing the actual site work there at, excuse me, yeah, Maple Hill. And, you know, we go, before we start these projects, we call the dig number, and they also spend time and they basically scope out everything that we can find. And occasionally, as you dig, you find something that wasn't, that nobody knew was there, and that was this condition.
So the damage was because the wiring was not known to be there?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes. Let's move on to Action Item G, Approval of Bid Award of Surplus District Equipment and Donation of One Vehicle. May I have a motion, please?
So moved on that.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Action Item I, Action on Student Disciplinary Appeal.
H.
H, John, H, Acceptance of Minimum Wage.
H, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Action Item H, thank you all. Acceptance of the Minimum Wage Increase to $15 out an hour effective 01-01-2024. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second on that.
Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Now, Action Item I, Action on Student Disciplinary Appeal. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second on that.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Denise, amen, amen and everybody. That's quite funny. At the end of the day, we still need an amen. No discussion on this. There is no discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Let's move on to our board member recognitions and community updates. And our first recognition is the Veterans Stand Down, NJROTC cadets. I'm going to turn you into the hands of Mr. Perino for this particular recognition. Mr. Perino?
Yes, I'd like to call members of the ELCs to the podium, and I also like to call Chief Slingelmann, who's going up there anyway. So why don't we start with the Veterans Stand Down? And let's see, we have Deborah Newberger. Would you like to introduce her?
Hi, so I'm Jennifer Newberger. I'm a past exalted ruler of the Middletown Elks Lodge, and I'm here with our inner guard of the ELCs, Deborah Newberger. We just want to thank all of the lovely ROTC young people who really helped us out with our Veterans Stand Down. For those of you who don't know what a Veterans Stand Down is, it is a free event where we invite all veterans as a way to thank them for their service and to help them out. We can put them in touch with any sort of items that they need, whether it's services or items such as toiletries, clothing, and the members of the ROTC helped us satay and beforehand by preparing all of the toiletry bags. They assembled, I believe it was around 100 or 200 bags of all of these toiletry items. They also helped us set up the hall for the event, break it all down. We literally could not have had this wonderful event without them, so thank you all very much. And I believe Chief Slingelmann has a few words.
Yes, thank you for having us here and recognizing our cadets. They do a lot around the community, and it's great to give them a little bit of recognition for what they do. So I'm going to call out their names. This is again for the Veterans Stand Down. Magali Delarosa Quenca, who could not attend tonight. Logan Eisenberg, who also could not attend, but I think I saw this young man. Alexis Enriquez, front and center. Anthony Gonzalez Serrano. Juan Gonzalez Serrano. Yes, they're brothers. Mackenzie Hagan. Xavier Hall, who could not attend tonight. Jalen Hernandez, who could not attend. David Landa, front and center. Madison Mann. Edward Moscatello, who could not attend tonight. DeAndre Olive. Alyssa Pabone, who could not attend tonight. Jay Santora. Doyle Sukilanda Goyal. And Raymond Zayas, who could not attend tonight. So that's for the Veterans Stand Down.
This is for the, next one is the Elks Pancake Breakfast. And the money raised in the Elks Pancake Breakfast is plowed back into the community. For example, coming up is the Christmas party for children, and they're collecting food, a collection of food. So a number of items that the Elks do for the community. So the pancake breakfast, Kyle, you want to take that away?
Here we go. All right, this is a larger list of names here. We had about 30 or so cadets that came out and supported that. Most stayed all day from 8 o'clock until about 1 o'clock, helping with setup and during the event, and then helping afterwards to clean up and set up the hall for the next event. First up, Elijah Aponte. Jaden Orocho, who is not here today. Colin Blavelt could not make it. Joseph Britto could not make it. Here's a familiar name, Genesis Campos. Aiden Cody, who could not make it. Logan Eisenberg. Here's another familiar name, Alexis Enriquez. Darrell Ferron. Santino Fior, both not here tonight. Jerius Fontanaz, did you walk in? Anthony Gonzalez. And where one brother is, we have the other brother, Juan Gonzalez. Andrew Gray, who could not attend tonight. Amalia Gross, who could not attend tonight. Xavier Hall, again, who could not attend tonight. Tullula Hardy. Cassidy Mahog, who could not attend tonight. Jaden Laborial. David Landa Ramirez. Madison Mann. Alice Martinez, who could not attend tonight. Daniel Mejia Gonzalez, not here. Nalea Milner, who could not attend. Liliana Navarro, who could not attend. DeAndre Olive, come on back up. Melissa Parker, who could not attend. Estevan Restrepo, who could not attend. Janaya Robinson, who could not attend. I know he's here, Alexander Rodriguez. Dayana Sanchez. Jay Santora. Doyle Sukilanda Goyal. And Kiara Yuraga Varela. So that puts us at about 850 hours of community service so far this school year, with all their efforts.
John, before you go on, before you go on, would you explain the white braids and the gold braids?
Okay, so we have a lot of different cords that we issue out to the cadets. The white cords indicate that they are a part of the cadet staff leadership. The blue and gold cord, or blue and yellow, depending on how you look at it, that is signifying that they went to Boy State. We had four boys go up to Boy State over the summer. We also had three go to Leadership Academy for two weeks up in Newport, Rhode Island. They get a black and gold cord. Or actually, they get a gold cord for Senior Leadership School. They get a black and gold, or black and gray cord. We have different cords for the different teams. Black for drill team, yellow for air rifle, orange for academics, green for orienteering. So if you see the different colors around, that means that they're on a different team. So that's what those signify.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a note, Chief Slingerland served 20 years in the Navy. And another note, Chief was one of my first students when I started in the 60s. He was a good student. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next, we have the Elk Student of the Month. We have two. And would the administration of the Middletown High School, led by Dr. Lynette Williams, you want to come on up here? No, any of these programs would not be possible without the administrative support. And secondly, no one can tell me that we do not have great students in this district. We have, how many students? 72, 100 in this, how many students?
76.
About 72? And this is an example of good students who go about their business and do what they're supposed to do. That's getting education. Hey, let's see, where's Dr. Williams? Right here? You want to introduce your team?
Absolutely.
John, she wants to take a picture of the ROTC first, before we get to the next presentation.
I thought we were going to do it together. That's good, though. Good. Any board members want to get up and get in this? Nice job, Caroline. Okay, the, next we have the Elk Student of the Month. And Dr. Williams, you want to say a few words?
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Each month, our cohort principals have the esteemed honor of recognizing one of our amazing scholars for their cohort. Tonight, we will recognize a 10th grade scholar as well as an 11th grade scholar, who have done tremendous work for their community and are outstanding scholars. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Mrs. Schreiner, who will talk about our first Elk Student of the Month this evening. And greetings, Board of Education. Thank you for having us this evening. And Superintendent Amy Creden.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, President Williams, Superintendent Creden, Board of Education, and guests. It's very great to be here tonight. First, I'd like to introduce Sharon Alvarez Bedoya, Sharon Ben. And behind me, I have my cohort team. I have Mr. Fratto, our dean, and I have Ms. Gonzalez, who is Sharon's counselor. And I would first like to read a little bit about Sharon in Spanish, if the board would be okay with that, because Sharon's family speaks Spanish. So I'd like to first read it in Spanish, and then I'll read in English, if that's okay. All right, Sharon. Sharon ingreso a nuestro distrito escolar durante el año escolar 22-23. Ella viene de su país de origen Colombia. Trabajó durante duro, trabajó duro durante su noveno grado para aclimatarse a su noveno entorno, mantenerse al día con sus clases y trabajar con sus compañeros para aprender a hablar el idioma inglés. Ella ha demostrado ser muy servicial y amable. Sharon ha sido una estudiante de la que toda la acogerte de 2022 ha podido depender para su apoyo. Cuando se le preguntó, Sharon se mostró más que dispuesta a trabajar con todos los nuevos estudiantes que son hispanohablantes. Ella viene y se presenta a los estudiantes que les hace una visita guiada por estudiantes y se ha ofrecido a ayudarles en cualquier cosa que necesitan, incluso yendo tan lejos como ayudarlos a llegar a sus clases. Sharon es un verdadero activo para la comunidad de la Escuela Secundaria de Middletown, especialmente para el grupo de 2022. Su comportamiento luce y amable junto con su afán por su servicial y responsable hacen que sea un placer tenerla como estudiante. Sharon entered our school district during the 22-23 school year. She comes from her home country of Colombia. She worked hard during her ninth grade year to acclimate herself to a new environment, stay on track with her classes, and work with her peers to learn to speak the English language. She has proven to be very helpful and kind. Sharon has been a student that the entire 2022 cohort has been able to depend on for support. When asked, Sharon has been more than willing to work with every predominantly Spanish-speaking new entrant that has enrolled in the 22 cohort this school year. She comes and introduces herself to the students, gives them a student-guided tour, and has offered herself to help them in anything they may need, even going as far as helping them get to their classes. Sharon is a true asset to the Middletown High School community and especially to the 2022 cohort. Her sweet and kind demeanor, paired with her eagerness to be helpful and responsible ways, make her a pleasure to have as a student. This is Sharon.
Sharon, it's so lovely to hear about all your accomplishments. Congratulations.
And now I'd like to introduce Ms. Karina Acevedo, the cohort principal for the 2021 cohort.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope everybody's having a good night so far. And I just first want to make sure that from all the middies here at Middletown, we stand with Monhagen, and that is the first thing I want to say. On behalf of the class of 2025, I'm here to present, and I am honored to be here, to speak about Hussain Mohammed. Hussain is a junior at Middletown. He is a bright star that was nominated by his guidance counselor. With an overall GPA of 94, he's an intelligent student who goes above and beyond for his friends. He speaks out for others who are not as confident to give their opinion and who have a voice. He does well academically, and he is currently enrolled in the Principles of Health Program at Bosse's with a GPA of 98. He volunteers in his community when possible, and he plans to be a pharmacist in the future. He is the youngest of three middies that graduated from here with two older brothers. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Hussain. Those are also lovely accomplishments. Well done.
Who's Caroline? You want to get a?
Let them have their, their, it's their moment. I'm not getting them.
Ed?
I'm gonna let them, that's their moment. I'm gonna let them have their moment.
Thank you. Moving on to our next recognition, Constitution Day poster contest. Turning you into hands of our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Mrs. Camille Adoma. Let's receive her at this time.
Good evening, Board of Education President Williams, Board of Education President, or Vice President Williams, Superintendent Creden, Board of Education trustees, and our guests. With me tonight, I have our instruction leaders, two of our instruction leaders from the high school for humanities, Mrs. Kate Sheedy and Mrs. Rachel Kuntz. And they're here to share a few of our Constitution Day poster contests, which was part of our Citizenship and Civics Week during the week of September 11th.
Thank you, Ms. Adoma. President Williams, Ms. Creden, members of the Board of Education. Really honored to stand up here with Ms. Sheedy and Dr. Williams, who is here to support with the rest of the high school team, to recognize one of our amazing scholars. So earlier this year, our high school recognized and celebrated Constitution Day and Civics Week. We had many activities in our social studies classes that focused on civic engagement and participation. One of those activities was a Constitution Day poster contest. We had many scholars who submitted original artwork. They were very impressive, incredibly creative. And on Election Day this year, scholars voted in their social studies classes and elected the winning poster, which you can see on the screen. It was designed by our amazing 11th grade scholar from Ms. Luba's College American History class, Paloma de Rosier. So I'm honored to present her with this award on behalf of the team.
Do you want to have some, you want to say anything, Sabra? Do you want to say anything?
I want to say, oh, describe. Okay, so I made this to resemble something like... like a hole in a blanket. Because to me, history is just a hole that just gets deeper and deeper and worse, basically, the more you get into it. So what I have done here is, let's say hypothetically, a hole ripped in the universe. And in the hole is everything that American history is basically about. The White House, the flag, and the long road to signify like how far we've come, especially with the values. I put the national flower on there. I put some balances on there. And I put a needle to kind of signify how we closed, like, we fixed our history. Because when you fix a hole in a blanket, it fixes, but it still has marks. You're still gonna see it. So I think that's how history is portrayed. And that's why I chose to design posters.
That's what we wanted you to say. Thank you. Thank you. That's fabulous. All right. Let's do it. All right, let's move on quickly. Last part of this, community updates from the Board of Education. We were coming into the last part of this year. We've got just a few more weeks left in this 2022. I'm going to start community updates. We'll start with Ms. Romero.
Good evening, everyone. I want to express my heartfelt empathy for the community regarding the unfortunate event that occurred yesterday. I shared some pictures. I have some pictures that I want to show from Twin Towers. I want to recognize Twin Towers Middle School for their notable accomplishments. They have 181 honor roll students with grade averages of 84.5% to 89.49%. And 328 high honor rolls students with an average of 89.5 to 102%. In total, 509 out of 842 scholars, either on the honor roll or high honor roll. I highly commend the school educator staff, educators, the staff, the students, and administrators for their outstanding achievement. I also want to share pictures from their concert. Not sure where the pictures are. Well, these are the high honor roll students. And I also have pictures from their, from last night, from their concert. And I want to end with Ms. Brookin's email signature quote by Mary McLeod Bethune. And it is, "Believe in yourself and never stop wanting to build a better world." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. Mr. Estrada.
Well, first, I want to apologize. I don't have a report from the annex over at Truman Moon. I'll make sure to get one from Mrs. Sorrentino. And that was on me, my fault. I do want to take the opportunity to thank some of our successful student athletes from last November, especially the football team. Our soccer team made it to the section final for the first time in about 30 years. And the girls' tennis team as well. And also, the entire staff, including security and members of administration and faculty that were involved in helping to cover all the various sporting events in late November over at the stadium. There were, especially our buildings and grounds crew, who were showing up at 5:00 a.m. and leaving at 10 o'clock at night. So they're to be commended for the amount of work that they did to make sure that the events were successful. And also, shout out to Lou Ingrassi and the Town of Walk Hill for giving our student athletes the parade down to 11, so to speak, after they won the section championship. And even in their loss in the state playoffs, the fire department and a variety of other law enforcement vehicles came down to the stadium, even though they had lost the game, just to give them one final farewell. So thank you to Mr. Ingrassi, as well as the Town of Walk Hill and all of the first responders who took part in that. So great job overall by the district. And again, it portrays the district statewide. I know I have conversations with the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, and they're extremely happy with the way Middletown hosts both the soccer and the football events. So they're very happy. Means they come back, and it means more money from an economic standpoint for our restaurants, our hotels, and all of the other ancillary businesses within the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. Mr. Bison.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. I had the privilege of attending the Monhegan 6th grade winter concert. And first of all, after being very vocal about getting Spanish translators, I want to thank Victor Araki for being there. And everything was translated in Spanish as well as English. I think one of the nice things, first, is seeing the growth from elementary to the middle school for our band, our orchestra, and our chorus groups. But I also think that what, to me, was amazing was to see the cooperation across the district, to see the orchestra teacher from, instructor from Presidential there onstage with some of his past students, to see the high school, the steel band, and our new, I'm gonna get it wrong, Mr. Estrada. You're gonna have to help me. The band, it starts with an M.
Mariachi?
No.
Mariachi.
Mariachi, thank you. Band.
I was wondering why she was asking me.
You see now? Seriously, it was really a wonderful evening. And I can't thank the district enough for reaching out and making sure that our Spanish residents who attend our facilities now, we have a translator. So, Mrs. Creden, thank you for hearing my cry.
Thank you, Mr. Bison. Mrs. Pluminow.
Thank you. I wanted to commend the district on bringing the, on Monday evening, December 11th, inviting the Jewish Federation of Greater Orange County and Zohor, which is, means to never forget, to present a wonderful presentation on combating antisemitism and hate. It's actually led by Judy Renee, who was an educator here in Middletown School District. And she shared some personal stories about her grandparents and parents, Holocaust survivors, and also shared how we can all contribute to, contribute to combating antisemitism. I wear this blue pin, the hashtag Stand Up To Jewish Hate. And if you hashtag Stand Up To Jewish Hate, it will bring you to a website to educate you. There's some great videos on there just to explain some history and also, you know, just bringing it right up to current times and what's going on in the world. So I just wanted to commend the district once again for bringing this important program to Middletown. And I know that when we stand up to Jewish hate, we stand up to all hate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redd.
Yes, good evening. I want to share some of the academic achievements that are going on at the high school in the first marking period. But first, I want to just acknowledge, not only did the football team have a historic run this year on the field, but in the classroom as well. They made the All Scholars Team Award. 75% of the team members was at a 90% or above average. So I think that was a really awesome achievement. And we applaud them as well as the people that are involved in seeing that happen on the high school level. In addition, I want to just talk about, in the first marking period, the high honor roll as well as the honor roll students. We have a total of 42% of the students were high honors and high honor roll. So that's 1,056 out of the 2,547 students. So we're making some wonderful strides at the high school. I want to applaud Dr. Lynette Williams and her team for continued academic achievement.
That's it? Thank you.
Well, no, I have something else I have. Well, I mean, I think it's time that, you know, we also want to do some Christmas cheer. So the YMCA that I'm associated with, we're having a celebration at the mall. They're going to be performing. A lot of our scholars are part of this performance. I'll do a number or two, maybe. But we hope that you guys come out and enjoy this. I think we all can use a little bit of festive cheer at this time of year and in light of some things that are going on. So I hope that you could come out and enjoy that event. That's in the Galleria Mall. It's down by the, what is that? The one, where they have the bowling? Down by the bowling area down there.
Santa Clara.
Round one, that's what it's called, yeah. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perrino.
Thank you, President Williams. Well, I first, and I think I speak for the board on this. The president does that. But I think we wish everyone, the people who are celebrating Christmas, a very Merry Christmas, Hanukkah. Has, this is the last night of Hanukkah. Am I correct, Juanza? So I hope everybody had a good Hanukkah. Hanukkah Samiach, is it? Samiach, okay. And Kwanzaa, those who will be celebrating Kwanzaa. Again, celebrate the harvest festival. Continuing on for a moment, someone in the audience needs recognition, and that's Amanda Sotero. Stand up, Amanda. Come on. Be recognized here. Because do we have those, do we have those, do we have those photos of the veterans? Recognition of the veterans, there we go. Yeah, Amanda called me, and she's president of the Carter PTO. And she asked if I could arrange something to meet the veterans. So we did that in honor of Veterans Day. And Chief Slingerland was there and a number of the vets. And I was there. And the kids really enjoyed it. They came in and they were giving the high fives to the vets. And it was a very enjoyable day. So congratulations, Amanda, for putting that together. And I must say, as a side note, the school looked great. And the rooms looked very inviting. So there's Chief Slingerland and myself and the students, who are the most important. So thank you very much again. And we'll move on now. The next thing, family night at the high school. That was another great evening where we saw a number of our students doing the right thing that was held this December 6th. Congratulations to Camille Adama, the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. She coordinates these family nights. And at that family night, Norvell Connell pulled the group together. And a great presentation. If you haven't seen the facilities at the high school, the technology areas, you should arrange a meeting and do that. They're just outstanding. Some of the programs include robotics, the coding lab, food exploration and cooking. And the food service did a good job with healthy cooking. Hands-on science tech lab. It was just a toy to force. I don't believe that anyone in the state has any better facilities than this building. And I don't believe that anyone in the state, we have good students, believe me, excellent students, over 91% graduation rate. And I said to people, I'm not going to let, whether it's this school or any other school, a few bad actors spoil the district. They're not going to do this. And we should concentrate on the good students and the positive in this district. The other thing, in the short time I have left, Glanis Foglia, congratulations. She obtained a $3,000 grant from Dunkin' Donuts Foundation for the Elks, for, I'm sorry, for the Lions Club program, No Student Hungry program. We started with one school and 10 students, 10 backpacks. Now there are three schools plus the annex, and that will be 100 students we can take care of. Good, I'm done. I don't want to go over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Good evening. I just wanted to read a phrase. I'm going to be brief. The phrase, "It takes a village to raise a child," originates from an African proverb and conveys the message that it takes many people, the village, to provide a safe, healthy environment for children where children are given the security they need to develop and flourish and to be able to realize their hopes and dreams. I live by that. This community is the village. We all have a role to play. I want to commend everyone who's playing their role. We have situations, and people step up to the plate. We've had meetings with family members, where people are stepping up to the plate and able to have that hard conversation. And I commend them for it. We still put out there, we have this thing called Community Connectors. So we still put out there where members of the community are able to come up to the school in the morning, in the afternoon, or after school to support our young people, to support our staff. We struggle, we celebrate together. We're one Middletown. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to start by sharing my, expressing my concern and compassion for the incident yesterday at Monhegan Middle School. I feel like I was in a blessed position being a certified volunteer for the district to make it over to the Monhegan Middle School and help with the departure of the, early departure bus departure for this school. And to kind of connect with a few students I was familiar with in passing. Great job by Mid City and the buses, very orderly, and the security staff and teachers. Everybody, you know, lent a hand in making it a smooth transition out the school to the buses. So once again, I felt blessed to be in that position. I know I was, you know, we got contacted by a lot of people, parents. And, you know, like Mr. Williams said, they're all our kids, they're all our students. So anytime we could step up, we should. So moving on, I would like to thank everybody that donated for the food drive, the Sixth Annual Food Drive for Six West Barbershop. Thank you, Ms. Romero and Twin Towers. Mrs. Brookin's, the whole team over there, they came through. They were loading up for like 10 minutes straight in the barbershop, so I appreciate that. And also, we have currently going the toy drive at Six West Barbershop, sponsored by Middletown U Sports. And, you know, at this time of the year, it's tough. We've come across a lot of, you know, losing a lot of people, especially within the last couple of months. So we know it's tough on families. So we just try to, you know, give what we can and help out the situation that a lot of families are in. So once again, the toy drive we're doing goes through December 22nd. And myself, Mitchell Williams, Pastor Williams, and I'm sure other board members will jump in. And we make deliveries to emergency housing, garnet health, and churches that are in need. So once again, thanks, everybody, for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I don't have anything really tonight. I do, but I'm not, in the interest of time, I'm not going to. I do, but I'm not, in the interest of time, I'm not going to, but what I do want to do and do want to say is thank you to each of my fellow board members that are sitting here at this table that have supported me in the last month. Many, for those who don't know, I have buried multiple siblings in the last month, back-to-back. My older brother and my older sister, my guy brother, and then even today, coming from a friend, from somebody who has been very close to our family for many years. And so it's been a hard, it's been a hard run, but I do want to thank you all for your compassion and your support in this season and allowing me to be able to have my time. If you have not seen me, it's because I've needed to have my time to grieve, and I still will need some more time. But I do want to take the opportunity to thank each and every one of you, the administration, the staff that supported my families, supported my wife as well in this situation. I do not take that lightly, and so I want to thank you, each and every one of you. That's all I have, that's all I have for tonight. Other than this, other than this, we're about to enter into the Christmas season, and my prayers or thoughts, we're not going to be back before the end of the Christmas, before the end of the year, but I want to wish everybody a happy holidays, a Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, whatever other holidays that you celebrate. I wish you the best, health and safety and wealth for your family, peace in the midst of everything that we're experiencing. My prayer is, is that we find a road to peace and that we become agents of peace and of collaboration. So that being said, Mr. Freddie Williams has one more thing, and then we're going to move on.
Pardon me, I forgot to mention the winter concert, chorus and band concert at Monhegan this past Monday was great, very organized once again, and the staff there did a good job, the kids did a bang-up job, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to move on to public participation, our opportunity to address the board. The board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda to public comments for a period of up to forty minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. Public is not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking, and speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. I also want to add that moving forward, as we have done in the last month, month or two, there will be further opportunities for listen-and-learn sessions in which you, as the community, can come down and actually sit down and have a conversation with different members of the administration as well as different board members. We will not be able to have dialogue here, we do not dialogue here, but this is your opportunity to speak. And, but we will offer, we want to continue to offer those opportunities for you to be able to come and sit down at the table with us, as we have been doing, but we want to amplify those opportunities as we continue to move forward. With that being said, if you, anyone who desires to speak can come to the podium, please sign in, and you'll have your four minutes. Thank you.
Kevin, you signed in first, I just realized that. Did you want to go first? It's up to you. Okay. I didn't realize. Good evening. My name is Nicole Houston, pretty well-known here for speaking truth. I heard a lot of words tonight being spoken. Hearts are hurting. Sympathy, empathy. Feel bad for me because my personal situation is tough. We're trying to heal. I'm hearing words like trust, feeling safe and supportive, connecting, championing, scholars. I want to talk to you about what I heard. I took a few notes. Together, all things are possible. We're grieving. There is a cycle of systemic oppression. Justification for further mistreatment happens in a cycle. There is systemic mistreatment of a targeted group, might be just a full group of youth, might just be over-the-top rules, smothering kids with so many rules and policies, strip searches, long lines at the door waiting to get in to be educated, misinformation being generated around no information, society accepting, approving, legitimizing, normalizing that. It's called power control economics, I'll go on. There's justification, as I said before, for further mistreatment. Institutions perpetuate and enforce further rules. Internalized dominance, feeling and acting superior, especially people in positions of power, often unconsciously targeting groups. Internalizing oppression, believing the misinformation about the group. What is oppression? Victimization, power imbalance, bullying, lack of rights, discrimination, less eligibility, disempowerment, low self-worth, lack of respect, alienation, being kept down, feeling isolated, internalized oppression. Our youth are being smothered with so many rules over the few, as you all have said, that they are like animals in a cage who can't breathe. If I put my two dogs in a little tiny kennel meant for a puppy, and I drop a mouse in there, what's going to happen? They're going to go crazy, they're going to bite each other, they're going to kill the mouse. I happened to see the video on social media, and it was unedited. I saw a child being stabbed more than once. It actually gave me chest pains to think I used to sit up there, and this is what's happened since I left. And when one of our newest board members sits there and talks about the wrong school that it happened at, do you even know what school it happened at? It happened at Monhegan, not Twin Towers. I don't mean to come in here and just yell at you guys, but, and I want so much for this to be better, but I'm watching these kids, I'm seeing what's happening on social media, and what you're doing's not working. I wish it was. I truly wish it was. I've been praying for all of you. The last time I was here, I said a prayer at this podium, and I know I only have ten seconds left, but I don't think what you're doing is the right thing, all of you in leadership. That's all.
Thank you.
President, Mrs. Creedon, and distinguished members of the board, and friends, former colleagues. I come here tonight not so much as a former board member, but I think the most important title that any one of us could cherish, that is of a dad, or mom, or mommy, in my case, dad or daddy. As a parent of Monhegan Middle School, when I think of Monhegan Middle School, I want to think of the Wall of Honors that's near the entrance, where we see the names of so many of our scholars that through sacrifice and hard work have made it as they get ready to enter high school. When I think of Monhegan Middle School, I want to think of the trip they take to Philadelphia, which I went on one year, and the trip that the students go to Washington DC, where they're sent a couple of days. My son, who is now in SUNY Albany, still reminisces that wonderful trip. When I think of Monhegan Middle School, I want to think of that big event they always have around December. Monhegan has talent, and wow, our kids have wonderful and amazing talent. But I don't want to think, I don't want to remember, or even accept what happened this, two days ago, right, to be precise. A situation reminiscent of what happened maybe a decade ago in Connecticut, which was far worse. No parent should see either on social media or in the news, an event that their school is being hurt, their kids are in danger, that what should be a safe passage from one class to another class becomes almost an encounter with death. My prayers for the young man and the, or student that's in the hospital, that should never happen, just like the incident over a year ago where one of our beloved staff members got almost flipped in the hair and hurt. That should never happen. Or the vaping we've seen that has continued to persist. I love this school district, I care for this school district, and again, I urge my colleagues to consider and to support a zero-tolerance policy when it comes to violence. There should be no violence in our school district. And I urge our board to ask you work and meet in executive session as we meet in the upcoming, I'm sure you're going to have the upcoming retreats, as well as when you meet with other stakeholders that are working together, working together constructively with the community, we could put a zero-tolerance policy for violence. There should be no violence in our school district. We have taken fondly to refer to our students as scholars. And I remember an exchange I had with Mrs. Creedon's wanted an email regarding why we use the term scholars. And let's show our kids that we're going to call them scholars, but that we have high expectations. What is it that it means to be a scholar? And for anybody that breaches a scholar's core of conduct by putting in danger the life or liberty of a fellow student or parent, there will be consequences. And that may even mean you may not be part of this district, but we're going to keep our district safe. There's too much good in our school district, as we saw tonight, to have tragedy become the poster child. Let not that happen. So my words are, so let it be said, so let it be written, so let it be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent, President Fox, Mr. Williams, appreciate your wise words. My name is Orenzo Charles, I represent RECAP, which is the Regional Economic and Community Action Program. I'm also here under the leadership of Cheryl Cohen, and I'm also accompanied by my outreach supervisor, Milford Jacobs. I run the SNUG Outreach Program, which is the fourteenth site in Newburgh. SNUG is gun spelled backwards, so it's an anti-violence program. And everything I said here definitely is, rings the truth, but unfortunately, some of our students or our scholars believe that violence is part of their culture. What we do is, we go to each school, sometimes we go inside criminal facilities and we speak to the youth so they could understand there's alternatives to violence. So as a representative of RECAP, we open the conversations to the partnership, whoever we have to talk to, to have those difficult conversations, so we could come, like Mr. Williams says, and be those examples that these students need to see, and they can hear some of the glorifying consequences that come with some of the actions that they might think is trendy or what is culturally driven. We represent that lifestyle, so we hope that this is an invitation that we can start those conversations. Unfortunately, I don't have my card, but I would love to have anybody take my contact information or speak to my colleagues so we can start that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
If you sign in and leave your information there?
Yes, stay with my number and email.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Genties, just a parent in the school district. There was a couple of things that you had said that I don't agree with. One about Mid-City, actually, there were eight elementary kid students at my door asking me what they should do if there were school. No buses showed up for them, I don't know what the protocol is when the buses are on hold at other schools. I don't know what happened with Mid-City, but elementary kid students were all over the place. The bus pickup is eight-thirty, the bus didn't come until nine-seventeen. I had eight kids at my door looking for help, so I don't know how many kids y'all left on the sidewalks unattended that day, but someone forgot about them. Also, the video is twenty-six seconds, and there's absolutely no staff, adults, security, anyone in it. So I can't really see how you responded in eighteen seconds if the video is twenty-six. I don't know what your cameras show, but there's other cameras in the school, they're not the ones you can control. I just wanted to share that. Also, there was a news article days prior to the incident, reported by News Twelve, that talked about threats and bullying that had been reported to the district. I believe you responded as it being a not credible threat. I don't know what's going to happen with all that and whatever investigation you're talking about, but we want to know as parents, when that investigation is done, to see exactly how credible or not credible those claims were. I don't usually see news reporters making up lies about reports they've made to the superintendent directly. So we, as a community, we want to see that, if it's possible. There's a lot of parents that couldn't be here tonight, so you did say there's going to be other opportunities. There are some that would like to have some type of meeting where people can speak freely, where you can actually respond to their concerns. I don't know if something can be set up, maybe Amy could put something together for them, but there's a lot of people looking forward to talking to all of you. As Nicole said, there's a lot of words flying around here. Sad, safe, those are just words. What we don't see here is any action from any of you, and I honestly feel like you are the problem. Parents have been begging you for more security and help and for you to participate, actually, in the lives of the kid, in their safety, but that's not happening. It's, when we come to board meetings, it's your advertisement for your autism events, Mr. Perino's pancake breakfast, Mitch's barbecues. It's becoming, this is like a commercial for what you guys do in the community. How about we have that same energy and do it in the school district? I'm done.
Thank you.
Good evening. I come today on behalf of two parents. One of the parents is the parents that Ms. Creedon accused of falsifying information, but I'll get to that secondly. Good evening, parents and Middletown School Board. My name is Connie Caniones, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Hope Alive 845. This is a very sad situation to see how our young children acted the way they did. We must find a resolution to better our security staff and be more involved in our students that attend in our schools. This all could have been prevented if the school staff would have listened to our students. The young student that came forward to warn about weapons should have been listened to deeply. As Hope Alive, we always listen to our children as it should be. It should never be about power or paychecks, because now both parties' lives and education could be ruined by this incident. Hope Alive sends our love, and we pray for a speedy recovery for the victims that may have been involved in this serious incident. This incident affected many communities with the outburst that could have been prevented. The young man that tried to warn the school is a nephew of the founder of Hope Alive 845. This young boy is scared to go to school and is traumatized with what happened to him. Hope Alive is asking for more assurance that our safety for our children is in place with better security system and having the staff pay more attention to the children. I thank you for your time. That was from the founder of Hope Alive 845. Now I will be reading from the father who, son warned administration. My name is Ricky Ramos. I just want to say I am deeply disappointed in the Middletown School District. The district used to be different, that cared for children. I myself grew up in this district, and I thought growing up, there will never be a better place to go for school. But that has all changed now, this district should be ashamed. It has left the entire city of Middletown citizens down multiple times. I expressed concerns about bullying, and it just kept getting swept under the rug. Well, I'm here to say and make it known, there is only so much you can sweep under the rug until you meet that one person that will spill all the information about what's really going on, and that starts now with me. I'm not afraid to speak up, and I will speak up for all parents. We are tired of our children's concerns being overlooked, we are tired of it being swept under the rug, we are tired of the lies from the district. I have no reason to lie, I wouldn't lie about something that has to do with my child or anyone else's child. I will only speak the truth. You claim the schools are safe, you claim this and that, well, words don't mean anything, your actions say it all, and that not good at all. What we used to call midi-pride should now be called midi-shame, because it's a real shame when our children aren't safe on your watch. And I'm sure I'm not the only parent that has expressed concerns over billing and other And I'm sure I'm not the only parent that has expressed concerns over billing and bullying and other matters. Ms. Creedon, you're supposed to be a school superintendent. If a parent goes to you with concerns, you should look into it yourself, not forward that parent to the school principal. Evidently, we reached out to you because the school principal and staff isn't doing what's right. But that's what I've been trying to figure out, is why you can't understand that. And that is from the parent of the student who notified the administration at Monhegan.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for the opportunity for public comment. I do wanna thank you for meeting with a group of us last month, a group of parents who wanted to connect. And that was a really great meeting. There were some, not only dialogue, but problem-solving suggestions, really helpful information. As some mentioned, it's sometimes a mystery to us as parents or our scholars, how things fit together in the district, policy-wise, and what they see every day. So that meeting was fantastic, and I'm glad to hear that there may be more opportunities. I think in particular, coming together as a group, for me, was more informative and helpful than some of the one-on-ones, although I appreciate those as well. But I think for tackling bigger problems, it's helpful as a group. I did wanna speak because my daughter, as some of you know, she's in fifth grade at Presidential Park, really having a phenomenal experience there, and was very excited to go to Monhegan, where we're zoned. And again, we know the staff is incredible there. There are incredible opportunities. Her class went to the high school today for, came here for the wonderful event. Some high schoolers showed them the, some of the STEM activities, and they got to see a little bit of the high school. But when I, I picked up one of my daughter's friends to drive them to school together, the girls were telling us they were nervous. They were nervous to come because of what happened, and they're now nervous about middle school. And these are girls who love school, love learning, are in every activity they can be in. So I think a couple of questions are, how are we engaging our middle schoolers? There are really great opportunities in the elementary schools and the high school. Do we need to look at what's going on in between? I see a lot of calls for engaging the parents of young people that are struggling, but I think that we know that that may be part of the reason. So how do we step in, not just with formal programming, but in building that sense of community among our scholars and among our families and each other? And, you know, I do think Ms. Houston is a really good example of that, I have to say. As I came to the district in 2020, I've seen her have these difficult conversations, even with people who maybe have different experiences or views. And I'm hoping that we can model that to our scholars as well because that can, that can be a point of coming together. And also hopeful the model, you know, whatever, it is also true, there's a lot of data to support that, an overly punitive environment, there almost becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy for some youth. And I don't want us, as a district, to go down that path either. So I'm hoping there can be some research and looking at evidence-based models and outcomes, long-term outcomes with longevity on districts that are similar to ours, student populations that are similar, resources in the community that have been pulled in, that we might draw from. So I'm looking forward to any future conversations where we can all come together because I do know the community cares a lot, and I'm hopeful that we can be more a part of some of the conversations and, and next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Donna McGreen, and I have a senior here in the high school. And I think senior year should be fun and exciting, which this year it is for my child, which is great. Being a cheerleader for the first time and getting to go to football games. I've never participated in that. But now I actually love football, so my husband will like that when it comes time for football season. But with that said, I'm looking forward to my child graduating early because every day I drop her off and I say, beware of your surroundings. Be aware of who's where, who's around, what they're doing. Get out. I love you, have a good day. That's not what a parent should be saying every morning to their child in the drop-off. I think that, I've said it before, I think I've said it three or four times, we need an alternative school or something. You can't behave, you need to go. And I know you can't discriminate or whatever, but there has to be some way. We might need that paint for the elevator. That could go to an alternative school and start building that. Maybe some psychologists in there, some hard teachers that can really help these kids. They should not be disrupting the classrooms. I mean, I know the anxiety levels of these kids are through the roof. And I worry every day, is something gonna happen? I'm at work yesterday, my phone is blowing up from my mother, who, I don't have a child in that school, but the chills that I had all day thinking about that poor child and their family and anyone else that was hurt in that situation. It's our community, so we're gonna hurt, but you feel so, so bad for them. There has to be a way. And maybe you can have these guys come in. 845 Hope Alive tried. I don't know if you've ever reached out to them, but you guys have to please do something because it has to stop. And I really think if you can't behave and you can't follow the rules, you need to get out. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Van Tripul. I am the founder of DAP, which stands for Differently Abled Peers. I'm also a minister in the community. Yesterday was very tragic. I got to speak to a lot of parents. I've stood here and I've listened to everyone speak. Even at the last meeting, the listening meeting that we had, I've read all the comments online. The parents in this community have every right, their feelings are valid, to be frustrated, to feel like they're not being heard and answered, that there should be more done. I heard Mr. Mitchell Williams says it takes a village. It does take a village, but the village will not work if the parents do not participate. The school is held accountable, but the community and the parents have to be held accountable as well. Yes, there are safety measures that need to be brought up in the district. Things need to be put a little stricter and so forth. Protocols need to be established. You know, the parents would sure love to know, what's the protocol when the child reports bullying? Or the parent, how long is the investigation? What does the investigation consist of? Okay? What is the protocol if a weapon is possibly reported? If a child comes and says? How long is that length of investigation? Are we looking into these children's social media? Obviously, it's, it's out there because we have parents in this community who are posting all of the bad things that go on in the school that they're receiving from the children. And I'm one to say it, and I don't care about the backlash. I read today, and I said it at another meeting. I am a woman. God, God made me to hold a thing. I did not birth an animal. I did not birth a savage. Our children are hurt, they are acting out, and there is a reason why. And we need to get to the bottom of why. We need to call in more outside agencies. I'm taking your number, sir, before we leave here today. We need to call more agencies in. We really, parent, more parents should be here because them five, six, 700 comments that were put on there, and it's the same seven parents that are here all the time, speaking and fighting and meeting with Mrs. Creedon and doing the phone calls and all of this. But none of them parents are here tonight, but they're calling our kids savages. And I'ma say it too, they don't look like me nor my children. And they're calling our kids animals. It's unacceptable. If the school dropped the ball, you guys gotta take responsibility. But I'm, I'ma turn around so everybody can see my face. When the community and the parents drop the ball, I say it again, when the community and the parents drop the ball, you must take responsibility for your child's actions. You birthed your child, you raised your child. They are not given a paycheck to raise your child. Now I will be the first to say, yes, they have some faults and flaws, but so do we. So if you're gonna be in this village, step up and be in the village and take care of your kid.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tor Hunter. I have two children who have graduated from the school system. I highly appreciate the job that the school system has done with the children. I didn't come here actually to speak about the incident that happened a day ago, but seeing everybody's response and reaction. There's a quote by Benjamin Franklin that says, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase little or temporary safety deserve neither liberty or safety." I think we have to be really careful about how we approach this problem. Unfortunately, we live in a world where bad things will happen, and we just have to be prepared. We have to prepare our students, our scholars, we have to prepare ourselves. We have to make sure that, that things are in place to minimize issues before they become larger issues in the community. The school board, the faculty and staff of all the schools, the parents, community members, all have to work together in order to make a safe environment for our children. Now, what I really came here to talk about was, I watched a special about mass incarceration recently. And in that special, they spoke about the school-to-prison pipeline. Mass incarceration is a huge problem for our youth, especially for young black males. Statistics, which are a little bit old, I think I got some from 20, from 2008. Age group between 20 and 34, 1 in 9 black males are incarcerated. The age group between black males 18 and older is 1 in 15. Now, for their white counterparts, it's 1 for every 106. And a part of what happens to create these disparities is that our children, especially black male children, are being disciplined at a rate that's higher than their proportionality in the community. So I think that's something, I looked for numbers. I look for, I'm a data person, so I look for numbers. I look to see where we stood in the Middletown community, where we stood in the Orange County community. I found a couple of research papers from New York State. They had other communities like Anadega County, Niagara County, New York City, but nothing for Orange County and nothing specific to Middletown. I'm not sure whether we have a problem. But with, with the absence of the data, we're not sure whether we do either. I would hope that we don't. I would hope that in Middletown, we handle things appropriately when it comes to discipline in our youth. But we don't really know. With that, I would hope that we would possibly spend some time and energy to maybe getting that data to see whether we fall in line with that and whether we're giving our scholars a fair shake, all of our scholars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I don't have much of a voice. My son goes to Monhegan, and, well, my name is Wendy. I am experienced with children, thanks to my children. I'm a licensed clinical social worker that has worked with adults for my entire career. And I had a conversation with some parents yesterday as I was standing there with a sense of urgency that I've never experienced in my life. We've seen things all over the news, and we always say, wow, my heart goes out to that community, to that school, to those parents, to those children. But literally just how all of those people have said, I never thought that it would happen in my school. Now, my son was affected in the way that his classroom was affected, and to hear him say, Mom, those minutes felt like a lifetime. And for him to say to me, I, we, we had no idea what was going on. I, I didn't know what to do, I didn't know what to feel. To hear that as a parent and not be able to be there for my son made me feel like I'm failing my kids somewhere, like we're failing our kids somewhere. I wrote something yesterday in response to somebody agreeing to the metal detectors. I work in a secure facility, so I go through metal detectors every single day. I need to use the bathroom, I have to use a set of keys. I work with the end of the spectrum of violence and behavior that has not been addressed in a timely and effective manner. So I wrote this, and I'm not a great public speaker, and I don't have a voice. So I hope that this captures what I'm trying to say today. I said respectfully, metal detectors, wandings, pat downs, increased security staff, et cetera, will not resolve the root of the problem. It's a start to address the physical aspects of these incidents, for example, preventing knives, weapons from entering the building. But what is really needed is psychological reform. There are no significant consequences to these students, their families, that'll address the violent mentality and behavior. Every case and situation is different, but what I am saying is that many of these incidents are preventable by intervening at the first incident. I've heard and experienced myself with my kid, a student getting spoken to one, two times, then in-house suspension one or two times. And that's too many chances for a child that is behaviorally showing signs of distress. Why not implement a lower tolerance of incidents? Why not suspend sooner? Why not show that there are significant consequences to unacceptable behavior? The parents' guardians will feel it too. Families out here need help as well. They may be trying on their end or not, we simply don't know. But what we do know is that there is a clear escalation in the number of incidents and the severity of these incidents. We are not doing what is necessary to help. These children need psychological, psychiatric assessments, treatments, interventions, and overall approaches to educating them and handling them. The metal detectors and such don't address that. What is happening is not normal, and we are doing, and what we're doing instead is normalizing drills, lack of accountability, and consequences. We are enabling these behaviors. And what we're going to end up seeing, which we already are, is a generation of people with complete disregard for everything and anything but themselves. I had more, but I ran out of time. Thank you, and I look forward to coming to these meetings more often.
My name is Amy. I have two students here. I have one in high school and I have one in elementary school. This is my first meeting I've ever came here. My oldest keeps me busy. She has a lot of issues, so I have to work one-on-one a lot with the school district and it's hard for me to come out and get myself more above that. What happened yesterday brought me out because we also have to be available for more. When I heard that Sue Short was retiring, it was really sad for me. And one thing I don't know anyone, heard anyone talk about, but my youngest had some violence at PPE. I wasn't mad at the student, I listened to her story and I felt, I understood that the kid that was doing it needed some more services. Obviously, I don't want my kid to be a punching bag and we had to stand up and say, that's not okay. But I also understood the other child was not doing this for fun, there's obviously something more going on with this child. I contacted administration at PPE, Sue's, Sue Short responds even after hours, like you, you send her an email and bam, I wasn't expecting anything, but once it went to administration, it was handled. My kid's not having a problem at PPE. Obviously, as the kids get older, you know, the problems are more ingrained and more thing, but I think one thing we have to look at is some of these administrators are out there that are doing good and before she leaves us, impart some of the stuff that is working, like Brookins at Twin. She was instrumental when my youngest was at PPE. So I think we need to really look at some of these people that are doing good and what's working to apply it further. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We're gonna, as I said earlier, I said, come, we still have a few minutes because everyone didn't use their four minutes, so you, you'll be our last, sir.
Hello. My name is Devon Ayers. This is a two-pronged problem. Starts at home and finishes in school. We was all kids. We know what they going through. We either gotta pay attention to our kids, we gotta pay attention to the teachers that's working around our kids. The teachers is the ones that we rely on to tell us what we got to work on with our kids at home. The parents are the ones to tell the teachers what to look out with our kids, so that way we can make our kids better. Education makes the kids better. The more they know, the less ignorant they are. We all agree on that. But if we not working hand in hand and we working separately, segregated basically, and I'm not saying everybody, but I'm saying some of us, and some of us is still failure because it's supposed to be all of us. Why not, why are we using the word community if it's not all of us? So at the end of the day, if we not prepared, this is gonna happen. The preparation that we gotta do, the preparation that we gotta prepare, uh, get ready for is parents and teachers working together like it was. Those that are much older than me, they understand what it was, sixties, early seventies, late seventies baby and I'm an eighties baby. I went to school, I wasn't the best individual. But at the end of the day, I learned a lot. I learned a lot. But that's because I had a teacher that worked with my grandmother, that worked with my mother, that worked with the community. He didn't just drive by, he walked by and he expressed to our families what we was doing in school. We see every one of y'all every day, bro. And what's the best y'all can tell us about our kids? But guess what? It's the flip side to that. What's the best we can tell you about our kids too as well? So again, this is a two-pronged problem. If one half do fifty percent, it ain't gonna work, but if both halves work together, we won't have this again. We won't have these topic of discussions. Our next topic of discussion to be something about what better education can we give to our kids? Instead of talking about how we eventually losing two kids, one possibly gotta risk spending the rest of his life in jail and the other one might be mentally tore up. So we lost as a community. We lost. Let's do better, together, together. That's what community is, unity, together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone that came to the mic to speak tonight. I want to reiterate that moving forward, we're gonna continue to have the listen and learn sessions, the opportunity for, for people to come and sit down and, and have those dialogues. This is, unfortunately, this is not a dialogue, but we have those opportunities as we've had and some of you have experienced it and we're committed to continuing in that going forward. Thank you. Before we get to our board member roundtable, let's, let's take care of the committee reports and get that out the way. Audit committee, Mr. Bison, will you take these, these next three or these next four items, please?
Hold on Pastor Chris, thank you. In our, in our board packet was the audit committee's.
Is your mic on? Turn your mic on.
In your board packet for this meeting, the audit committee minutes from October 2nd, 2023. I need a motion for this board to accept those minutes. Moved by John Perino, seconded by Mitch Williams. Any discussion on the minutes whatsoever? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes passed unanimously. We also have the internal auditor's report. I need a motion for this board to accept the internal auditor's report.
So move.
Moved by Paula, seconded by John Perino. Is there any discussion?
Yes, one question. The very last page of the internal auditor's report under board policies, they had mentioned that in their review, they did not see an addition of the policy procurement uniform grant guidance for federal awards that they had recommended previously, and I just wanted to know where we stood with that.
I will look to Mr. Michael Tuttle. Michael is our assistant superintendent for business.
Can you hear me now? Yeah. So during the audit season in the spring, we had actually approved that policy, but when they were here doing the audit, it was like not on the website at the time, it was just a timing issue, so that policy has been approved and so we noted that in the corrective action plan.
Thank you.
In our rebuttal, correct?
In our rebuttal.
In our rebuttal. The third item is the, you know me, I like to, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. I'll now move on to the approval of the financial statement and the management level, and it had to do with the extracurricular audit. I need a motion to accept that financial statement.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Estrada and seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Number four though, you, are the approval of the weekly claims reports. Every member of the audit committee and as well now as the Board of Education receives weekly the claims audit reports for the district. However, the, at our audit committee meetings, we must discuss them, there are questions raised and our committee gets the answers from Shelley Cook, who works in our business office. So what I'm asking here is for the approval of the weekly claims reports and that's for June 14th, 22nd, 29th, July 17th, 24th and 31st, August 7th, 14th, 21st, 28th and July 31st and last, and August, I'm sorry, August 31st. And lastly, September 8th and September 26th of 2023. So I need a motion to accept those.
Move.
Moved by Pastor Williams, I need a second, seconded by Paula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What I'd like to recommend to the board members, take a look at them, if you have a question, submit it and your questions will be answered. Generally, they're just, I, I want to use the word curiosity questions, but we like to know the expenditures and who the, who the vendor is and the reason why that request was made. So please help the audit committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bison. Let's go ahead to our, our board member roundtable. We're in our, we're, well, we all know the parameters. We're gonna start again with Ms. Romero.
Thank you, President Williams. Mr. Reddick and I met with the amazing ladies who formed part of the bilingual E and L and World Language Education Department. I did share a picture. Ms. Rivera Brad, Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Sanchez and Ms. Caraballo. Thank you all for all the hard work that you do, all your dedication, that, everything that you do with our English language learners. Lastly, I want to close with, I am the liaison to Twin Towers Middle School and I am gonna continue to highlight their great achievements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. Mr. Estrada.
Where do I start?
You want my four minutes too?
We can't trade them. So first of all, I, I want to commend everyone at Monhegan Schools, our nurses, our security staff, everybody mentioned in the board statement from last evening for what was an incredible job that they did, that as time goes on, our public will find out little by little exactly how exemplary they were and our public will see that what happened yesterday and how our staff reacted will be utilized by other districts in response time. I'll just leave it at that. If you're gonna come to the microphone and question mine or anybody else sitting here at this table, commitment to this district, day in and day out, we are in the buildings every day, whether it's at an event, all of us serve as a liaison to a specific school building, you will lose me in the conversation. I've been a member of this community for 58 years, had two scholars, one in the top 10, the other one a special education student from autism. I know the full range of spectrum. I will put our staff up against anybody, I will put this Board of Education and their experience against anybody else. Now, if you want to come up to the microphone with solutions, different story, and we had a load of people coming up to this microphone tonight with solutions and wanting to help. We are all open ears. When we had the incident at the high school, we had our listen and learn, some of you took part in it and it was a very valuable interaction and we hope that that will continue after this particular incident as well. We are members of this community, we shop in this community, we educate our children in this community. Some people have children at Monhegan Middle School. So to think that we're gonna turn to blind eye or we don't care or we're not listening is a bad narrative and not a correct narrative. I look forward to reaching out to some of the folks who have come up to the microphone tonight to find solutions. If you don't want to find a solution or be part of the solution, then get out of my way. If you want to go and groan on Facebook with a false narrative, then get out of my way. I want to find solutions to this problem. Shame on you for not wanting to be part of the solution and instead trying to badmouth our security staff, question whether or not we're doctoring video that doesn't match 18 seconds because you have a different video? You really think the superintendent of schools is gonna come up here and tell you that we had response time of 18 seconds if we don't know that is a fact? And shame on News 12, and I'm looking right at you, and your reporter for not taking the time to do their job as a reporter and get all the facts straight. You are a laughingstock in this county, in every school district, mind you, for the same exact reason, bad misinformation and bad reporting. You got solutions, come to the table, we're all ears.
Thank you. Mr. Bison.
Wow, that's a hard act to follow. I'm gonna end on a very hopefully joyous message and wish my fellow board members, our complete staff and those left in the audience, a very happy, healthy Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa and New Year. So that's what I have in conclusion this evening, Pastor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Try to be joyful. I, I know it's difficult.
Good job.
I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, I, I just think we need to keep upbeat. If we dwell on negativity, that's what we're gonna have, is negativity. I want to look for positive.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Blumenau.
Sometimes being a board member of, or any, of any organization is hard because you're privy to information that is not available for full consumption until the complete investigations are done. And I echo the sentiments of Ms. Estrada, who shared that we will see that Middletown School District is a beacon. We've always, we always have been, at least as long as I've served, as long as I've had children in the district, I've lived here for 27 and a half years, grew up in Orange County and my, you know, I, to say that we're not hurting alongside the parents and the families of our, to even suggest that we're not sincere in what we feel for our brothers and sisters in Monhegan, it, it's just so hurtful. Somebody said, you know, we, we, we don't want it to happen in, you know, not in our school district, right? We would never think it would happen in our school district. I have something to tell you, it happens, it happens. And every day that we put our own children on a bus to school, I remember, you know, we're entrusting our kids to, you know, for those six hours, seven for some, maybe nine if they're on a sports team or they're traveling, maybe 12, right? We don't see them until midnight sometimes when they're traveling. We have, we have to trust that our community, that our school district is doing everything that it can do to be up to date on whatever protocols and procedures are, are available for our students. It's a real balance to try, for me in my head to say, you know, metal detectors, no metal detectors, you know, how do, bag checks, no bag checks. How do we make our children, solutions, I want an answer. How do we bring our children to school every day and make them feel welcome and safe and feel like this is their home, but not just that it's their home that they can kick their shoes off and... But not just that it's their home, that they can kick their shoes off and, you know, relax, but that they are, they should be aware and they should be respectful. So we do look to our parents. And I feel like this administration, more than any administration that I've seen in this school district, is bringing the community in, bringing the parents in, opening the doors to say, how can we do this? What do we need to do? How do we reach the parents who are unreachable? And so many of them are. It's up to all of us. It is. But our, our teachers, our administration, our security, amazing security, even the SROs out there, I mean, how, how much can they do beside everything that they can do? So I believe that that's happening. It's not just a, it's not just a wing and a prayer that it's, that it is happening. I know that it's happening. I know what our security plans are. I know what the expectations are for our teachers, for our staff, for our security, for every single person, our nurses. So thank you for the extra few seconds, but I just want to say thank you to those who came with solutions, and I look forward to working side by side with you.
Thank you. Ms. Redd.
Yes, good evening. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. We have a well-diverse team of leaders that truly care about what's going on in this community. Also, I want to just take this to what I always do as an educational moment. And we've been tossing the word solutions around a lot. And I'm reading a wonderful book. It's called Disruptive Thinking by Dr. T.D. Jakes. And the real premise of the book is instead of complaining, instead of taking sides and accusing people of different things, the goal is to find the path of a solution. And the book explains in so many details how we have to be the risk takers. We have to be the ones to take on the challenge to interrupt the negative thoughts that are going on, whether it's personal, whether it's as educators, whether it's as leaders. We've seen a wonderful example of that today, young lady Sharon, an ESL student. And I see it all the time as educators. When something's really close to the heart that you really want to improve on in your life or take advantage of, you have to make a stand and then you have to find a solution to how you're going to solve that problem. This young lady came in, knew very little English, and she took the necessary steps to take charge of her life and come up with a solution so that she can be able to meet the goals in her educational journey. And so we have a lot of examples of that. We have examples where we have to change that train of thought that we can't do nothing. We can't do a particular thing. You know, that status quo that, well, I come from very little, so I can't make it to college. I can't, you know, my parents can't afford college for me and things of that nature. Have to make a stand. We have to sit down and say that I'm going to find a way to get through this. And so many of our scholars have done that. We see it in the school system. So what, my parents never got a college degree, but I can make a stand right here. I can make a change. I can take advantage of the college preparatory programs. I could get as far as I can before I get out of high school and then I cross that barrier later when it comes to determining how I'm going to get the financial opportunities that I can take advantage of. So again, it's so important that we look for the path of solutions. A lot of the things that are very organic and natural, it's so easy to look for ways and means to get past some of the things that are troubling us. So again, and just summarizing what this book is about, it's all about looking to find opportunities that you can take advantage of. And don't just rest on your laws and feel that I can't get things done because of situations and powers that be that have been in my past. My parents, you know, self-wood, diabetes and high blood pressure, I'm probably going to go down that path. You make a stand, you make a change, you change your eating habits in your, in different situations in your life. That's the goal and that's what education is all about.
Thank you. Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Williams. Ed Estrada said what I was going to say, so I'm not going to repeat that. And you probably said it better than I would have said it, Ed. I just refuse to be negative. I mean, people might say advertising this or that, but no, I'm pointing out the work of the students in this district. I see that all the time. We need, yes, we do. We need cooperation with all our parents. And sometimes, many times we get this and many times we don't. And good parenting shows. And one person in the audience tonight, I mentioned Amanda before, I went to, a couple of years ago, I went to the Carter, Carter Celebration of the Honor Society, and her daughter was in there. Well, that's because I'm sure her daughter does hard work and I'm sure the, I'm sure this tells, they, they're good parents and they keep their students on the right track. You have to monitor students. You have to ask them, what, why are you going to school today without doing your independent study? You have to ask, do you have anything that may harm other students? Parents have to know. So that's one thing. I'm not going to say anything more than that. And as far as advertising the pancake breakfast, that's not my program. It's the 1,100 Members of the Yalz Program. I mean, I help up there because I'm a member and the students do a good job. They're in a workman-like situation up there. They're gaining experience for life. So just continuing on another track, one of the staff members at Twin Towers, Eric Fiero, wanted me to give a shout out to Nikki Elliott, a member of the Middletown Fire Department, because the Erica Fiero and her team, I don't know all of them, but I knew some of them, Barbara McCall, Nick Ferrex, and Ryan Stabner, they did an interdisciplinary project on the Triangle Shirtwaist Fire. And they called the fire department and Nick Fiero, Nikki Elliott sent up some helmets so the kids could wear helmets. They have, they were plastic helmets, of course, when they were doing the project and they were getting into this. And very interesting, there you are, very interesting, in the
Excellent.
Time we have left, the Triangle Shirtwaist Fire resulted in a number of improvements being made to safety loss. Just another little factoid here. Indicators, a fire indicator relates where the fire is. It's an, it's an all detect, an all technology. But interestingly enough, I have one of those indicators, large bell on it, and I was told, and I don't know if this is the truth, that that indicator, when the box was pulled, that was the indicator in the fire station, one of the fire stations that came into the, that came in on the alarm. So I don't know if that's true. But the students are all working here in good order, good students, doing what they should do, learning how to write, learning history, in short, getting an education. The great preponderance of our students do this. I'm going to emphasize, I'm not going to be negative when I'm here. Do I recognize problems? We have to solve them. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Perino. Mr. Williams.
Very brief, I just want to wish everybody a happy holidays, all love and blessings.
Thank you. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Thank you. Something that struck a chord with me, I think when Mrs. Vanderpoel was up talking, she said that we don't get paid to raise kids, right? The children. And I believe she was talking about more, more or less the teachers than us because we, you know, as, I don't know if everybody knows or not, but board members do not get paid, right? So the, the combination of diligence and patience is what we have to have, and it's not easy. To be so diligent and then to have patience to hear things that aren't true, right? Misinformed and to still be diligent, you have to be a special kind of person, right? So everybody sitting at these tables is vested in our children, our district, and the benement of our kids in one fashion or another, you know? Yesterday was, within the last 24 to 36 hours, it's been a roller coaster of emotion for me. My son is a student at Mon Hagan Middle School, you know, and I'm, I'm the liaison for Mon Hagan Middle School. So, you know, that's why I made my best effort to get over there in a timely fashion and help out with the departure for the kids, take the temperature of the building and try to help any way I could. So I have a picture that I think should be coming up, best I sense.
He's got it.
I think he has it.
Yeah, he does have it.
Yeah. So that's part of the, the roller coaster I've been on, right? So yesterday I was a little anxious about my son and our kids. And then today, my daughter graduated from college, a semester early, right? Thank you. Thank you. So, you know, it, like I said, it was a roller coaster to have one of my kids who's 12. Yeah. That's Dominique Kayla Williams. She's, she got a nursing degree today. She did, yeah, she walked today early and I'm going to her, the big ceremony in May when she walks again. But to have your 12-year-old son, right, in a situation, like I said, it was a blessing to be able to be there, present for all the kids. Like I said, I'm going to reiterate, Mid-City did a great job. The bus, some bus drivers came out and said, hey, no, you're, why you're, you're here. Kids are, you know, talking in groups and, and, you know, they wanted to get, get more situated and get it more orderly. So I think they did a great job. But also the, myself, Mitchell Williams, John has done sports in any area. I lived here my whole life. Within my, I'm going to date myself, within my 25 years of coaching and training, I've run across at least 1,000 kids, right? I mean, in my not-for-profit program right now, I have over 100 kids. And, you know, when I feel like parents aren't as invested in the program or I pick up where I need to pick up, you know, so, and I feel like that, if we all did that, right? Like my brother in the audience said, that 50/50 is like the split, it really doesn't make sense unless it's all together. So, you know, that's, that's a sentiment that I, that I really believe, you know, we all have to lean in, you know, and be diligent and patient on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm last, right? So let me, let me say this. My emotions have been all over the place and I think there's a good reason for that. But I'm very clear in, in, in many things, very clear in many things. I have, I've appreciated all of the comments that have come tonight, negative and positive. I appreciate everyone that got up to the mic to speak. And it's the right, it was said tonight that parents have the right to be frustrated, they have the right to be concerned. They do. We do. We do. I'm a parent, got a child in middle school, got a child who's a senior here at the high school. Every day I worry about my children, even before, even before any of this happened. I worried about my two black young men, 20-year-old who graduated in 2021, and, and my senior who's going to graduate in 2024. I worried about them just walking out the door and walking down the street as black males. I worry about my daughter at 13 years old and what she goes through, what she experiences, the issues that she's dealing with, the changes in hormones and the changes. And I worry about my children every day, whether they're in school, whether they're out of school. Because the fact of the matter is, this world is a hot mess. And the reality is, is that we're living in a society of hopelessness. But I'm clear with my emotions, I'm clear with everything that I've experienced, I'm clear that there is hope. I'm clear that if we find a way to work together, because here's the reality, my brother said it when you came, when you came to the mic, you said, you said, this is a loss. It's a loss. It's a loss for all of us, not just for, not just for the district, not just for the board, but for the community. It's a loss, but it is not the end of the war. It's a battle. We're in a war to save the lives of our children. We're in a war to save the lives of our community. And it grieves me. I've cried. I have cried since this incident happened. I held back tears while we were in the back room in executive session. I held back tears because I grieve for what's going on for our community and for our young people. I grieve that, that I can understand why our children are dealing with social media, social media bullying and things like that because we have, we have people that bully on Facebook. And it wouldn't be a problem if they didn't matter to me. If you didn't matter to me, I could blow you off all day long. But the fact of the matter is, it was not my enemy, it was my neighbor that vexed me and that hurt us. And so at the end of the day, we've got to come to a place where we stop, stop. This is a community. Our, our, our position here, our position here doesn't preclude us from experiencing the same things that everybody else experiences, the same confusion, the same chaos, the same, we all are in this boat together and we're fighting. I want to fight together. I'm tired of, I'm tired, people, people have said, they've called me everything but a man of God. But I declare today that we're going to continue to move forward and we're going to continue to work together. Thank you. I can't finish. I got more to say, but I can't finish. Thank you. At that, with that being said.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am. I would like a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion to second to any discussion? That's presidential privilege.
Which is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is, the retreat, the retreat is on the 21st.
January.
And our next meeting is January
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. January 18th.
Happy holidays, everybody.
In between that, we will have listened and learns. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. We're out. Thank you.[1771.61]